So, we're about a minute over our time. I'm trying to get everybody's chance to get here. This is the December City Council Work Session. It's now six thirty-one. We'll get started with a roll call. All of the council is with us tonight. Your mayor is here. Our city attorney and city manager is here, as is Natalie, our city finance director. We need a motion, please, to approve the agenda.
Mayor, just had something come in last minute.
Okay.
The fire chief's printing off, you need to add a not to exceed twenty-five thousand for engine, for fire engine, he's be repaired. He just got the quote, as we're speaking. He's printing off his staff report now, hand-delivered to y'all.
This is like five trucks, twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, this is to rebuild a fire engine that's out of service. It's our primary fire truck, so it needs to be repaired. Chief, if you would, just give him a copy, please. I'd like to add that to the agenda under, um, I'm sorry, four C, thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda with the addendum added to it, for the fire engine. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor, please show by raising your hand. Well, Patty wants to do it this way.
Yeah, and the reason, so y'all will know, it's a little short information, is because when you're watching on YouTube, you cannot tell how people are voting up there. So, I thought that way citizens can see how we're all voting.
Okay, the agenda's approved. We'll move right into planning and development. Lisa Gueberi.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have anything, any cases to, uh, here tonight, planning and development. As you know, our cases are dictated by the application process, so there was no applications in process to fall into next meeting.
Well, you've been working overtime the last couple of months, so that's not all bad.
We do have two positions open on the Planning and Zoning Commission, if anybody would like to apply to go to the city's website or stop by City Hall. And that is all we have.
Very good, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to Finance, Human Resources, Ann Munzinger.
Mr. Mayor, I have the things fashionable this evening. Thank you.
Okay, very good, then. Thank you. Moving next to Public Safety Committee, Bill DeVall. Bill DeVall, Melanie Long. I'll get you, Bill. You're on transportation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just flip them.
What?
Just flip them.
That's fine. Chief Johnson, yeah, you're here. Just like everybody else, I saw this when y'all saw it with the agenda, so I had briefly spoken to Chief Johnson about this a few months ago. But I didn't since I was on vacation this week. I did not have a chance to meet with him and ask a lot of questions or, or anything like that. So, I've asked him to be here tonight, just to go over what this is, why it's needed, and the importance of it. That way, anybody that has questions, including myself, we'll just, we'll just do all that tonight. And also let you go ahead and go over the not to exceed engine rebuild. So, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Good to see y'all this evening. So, the, um, I apologize for not being better prepared on the engine rebuild. I spoke with the shop today, this morning, and, um, was the first time he had given me a rough estimate of how much the, the repairs on the engine would be. So, um, as far as that is, um, we, we had one of our fire trucks that stationed at Tomborough Road, started leaking a lot of oil. Now, we saw a lot of oil in the floor of the bay and was having to add some oil. So, we sent it to the shop, which is Haynes Enterprises and Winder. They're, they're the ones that's been used, that have been used. We worked on our big trucks for many years, and, uh,
Can we go on order? Cause you're on item four C.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so the audience walking, you know, watching, they'll know what we're talking about. So, item four A, I'm sorry.
Okay, item four A. So, this is the purchase of the air packs. So, most of y'all know, several of y'all have been in, um, come out to our train of burns and, and some have even run the air packs before. But, so we have S U B As that we have to wear when we go into dangerous environments, um, that has this debris. And, um, the packs that we have, we have automatic agreement with other agencies, because for N P A standards, we do not have enough personnel to operate on fire scene safely, so we need other additional personnel. And our packs have always been interchangeable. We've always been able to, um, well, we've had the same packs for many years. The new models that, um, all the other departments have went to, they have a device on them. It's a hose that's connected to the shoulder strap that if anything happens to our air pack, we can hook to somebody else's air pack and utilize their air in their bottle to, to, for self-rescue or to get out. The new packs are not compatible with our outdated packs. So, I would like to, for the council to approve for us to use Floss money to replace the air packs with the, with the new version. I, I don't feel that it's feasible to do part of our air packs, because I don't want mixed equipment on a fire scene. If somebody was to go in with somebody who's not compatible and something happens, then it will cause confusion in that. So, that's the reason to replace all of them at one time. So, the price would be to replace all of the air packs with the cylinders that go with them, because they have a, a quick connection on the cylinders and the, um, mask. Anybody have any questions?
Total amount?
Yes, sir. This is, the total amount is, um, two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
Okay. So, just a quick question, just, so, just so we understand what it is, so the, there's sixteen of these air packs? And you're getting, is that what it says, sixteen air packs and forty-eight cylinders? So, how does, how does it?
So, each, each apparatus, we have four frontline apparatuses in the city. We have one at Station Eighteen, two at Station Sixteen, and one at Station Fifteen. Each apparatus, uh, per, any standards have four packs on each apparatus. So, so the packs and each pack is, by standards, is supposed to have three reserves. So, you have one in the pack with two reserves, as far as the cylinders is concerned. It's not unfeasible for, um, on a, you know, fifty percent involved structure for firemen to go through two to three air bottles on the cylinder. Um, they come out of the fire, they swap their bottles, and they go right back in. So, uh, the, they're forty, they're, they're rated for forty-five minute bottles, but that's if somebody was sitting in a chair, not doing work. Theoretically, you got probably about twenty minutes.
I know when you and I spoke, I'm sorry, you, when you and I spoke a while back about this, there was something to do with the way they buckle in and everything, and this covers the way they strap in, the new buckles, the new,
Yes, ma'am. It's a new harness. It's a completely new, um, from start to finish.
And you said, like, when you would go out, like, cause we, we share with Onette in Walton County, they're already on this new system.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not. So, we can't, and you said a lot of times you might get out, you're just, I'm using their, you're using their tanks, they're using yours. But here, we've been like, uh, on an island, I guess, basically.
When they, when they, when they upgraded their last packs, then yes. Um, it has been, it's not uncommon for, um, a Loganville fireman to go in partnered with a Walton County fire. Um, you know, you, you have, um, different crews that get exhausted, that needs to rehab and, and take a breather, and then there's still work to be done. So, it's not uncommon at all for us to, to pair up with other agencies inside of destruction. Uh, before, it was not a problem, because we had the same exact pack. So, uh, there's a hose attached that, that is a quick connect that you can say, say you get in too deep and you run out of air, take that, plug it into the, the part of your partner, and you utilize the air in his tank. You both do that until you can get out safely. Uh, they have upgraded to the new pack style, which has the different quick connects and stuff, and ours will not connect with theirs.
Is there a warranty on these or anything, or any, like, the old, the other technology is old? And so, this is a new technology. Is this something that's a standard? You see it to be here for a while? Like, if we make an investment now, like, in two years, is there something you see coming down the road that?
No, no, ma'am. I, I can tell you the, the new packs that we currently have are twenty-fifteen. So, they're, they're nine years, it's going to be ten years old.
And then how long do these last?
Um, they, they've lasted this long. Um, they are, they are exposed to extreme conditions.
I mean, the, the new ones, how long will they last?
Um, I would say at least ten to fifteen years.
It won't be compatible with the other agencies?
Yes, ma'am.
What will happen to our old equipment?
So, I would like to, um, some of them are still good for us to use for training. Uh, you know, we, we do have to do live burns every year, and I would much rather utilize those and leave the new packs on the trucks ready to respond to an emergency versus the way it is now, where we pull everything off the truck to train. And then if we catch a call, we have to have a delayed response, trying to put all that stuff back together. Also, the sewer department and the water department, I spoke to the director, and they only have one pack to go down in confined spaces on the plant and one pack to go into confined spaces in the sewer system. So, some of, some of our packs, I would like to let them utilize for those functions.
But there's, and if we have a problem, is there like, is there like a standard warranty just within the first two years, if there's any issue?
Yes, ma'am. There's a standard manufacturer warranty on the packs.
And you think you have some questions?
No, I think you got one.
Anybody else have any questions? I think there's a second. Do we need to say what we're gonna do on this, or you want to even tell them about everything? I mean, this is a lot of money. Do y'all wanna just wait and just vote on it Thursday night, or you wanna put it on consent?
Jen?
Okay. We'll put that on consent. And then I think there's another part to achieve.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so, we also have, um, the machine that is designed to fill the air bottles. Uh, once we use, they have to be tested every year for air quality and, and that, that sort. Currently have two in the city. One is at Station Eighteen on Old Loganville, and the other one is at, um, Station Sixteen, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, Station Fifteen on Leeburg Road. Uh, the, the one at Station Fifteen is, um, completely stopped working. It's completely out of service. We can't use it at all. Uh, it was manufactured in nineteen ninety-four. You know, tells you how old that machine is. It's been retrofitted several, several different times throughout the years. It was designed, when it was purchased, the compressor on it was designed to only fill a, a twenty-two sixteen P S I bottle. And we retrofitted it to fill a forty-five hundred P S I bottle. So, it, it's been through the wringer. Um, we've spent, uh, money trying to, um, put new capacitors to, um, help the, the compressor start on it. And it's just, it will, it won't come on at all any longer. Um, so, I would like to also use Floss money to replace that machine, uh, which is, um, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and four dollars.
And is that just gonna, you're just replacing one of them, the one that doesn't currently work?
Yes, ma'am.
And is it, is it in stock, or is it something like the fire trucks where we say yesterday, and then it's eighteen months from now, you're gonna get it?
I don't know how quick availability is. I, I know that, um, they usually build these. So, because you can, you can get, I mean, you can get as elaborate with additional, so you can get extra storage tanks, you can get extra stages in the compressor. This is, um, this is the cheapest one that has been comparable to the size that we currently have. So, they would still have to come out, do a site survey, and build the, the machine for the specs that we have on site.
Are you able to fill the tanks now with just the one working at the other?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's not giving us any problems? We're being able to get that done?
No, we're just having to use it more often, so, I mean, obviously, the, the more use that you do, the more warranty you have on it.
How old is that one?
That one's twenty-eight, uh, two thousand and eight. It was, um, purchased with the station, with the station on Loganville.
Okay, so we're just buying the one to replace a twenty-five-year-old when it's not working?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, if there's a warranty on it?
Uh, typical manufacturer warranty, uh, one to two years is, is what we get out of it. We, um, we have to service it every year and do air quality, um, test on them. Um, it's, it's a, it's like with, with anything regarding public safety or the fire department. It doesn't matter what piece of equipment you have, somebody, some technician has to come out every year and certify and say it's still good.
And the price includes everything? You said they had to come out with a site plan?
Yes, that includes everything.
That's everything that's out the door?
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have any questions?
That's not a BOGO, is it?
No, sir. I tried.
About one, give one free, huh?
I tried.
We need it.
That was only on Black Friday, so we missed it.
Missed it.
Any questions? Any questions, Anne? Oh, fatty. I'm gonna put that on consent as well.
Okay, good, ma'am. Okay, now back to where you started.
Okay, in a full circle.
Leaking oil.
So, yes, the truck started leaking oil really bad. We sent it to the shop to see, um, if it just needed gaskets, uh, replaced. Unfortunately, on a, on an engine of that size, the only way to completely diagnose it, they had to break the engine apart to see what was faulty in it. And that's when they found that, um, the cylinder sleeves inside the, the block had dropped and, and caused it to, um, leak oil out, out of the, um, head gaskets. So, the only repair to it is to rebuild the engine.
Is that a common problem? I mean, I'm looking, that's two thousand and fifty. How many miles are on that fire truck?
Um, I don't have that in front of me, unfortunately.
Just a nine-year-old vehicle.
It's, um, it must be a problem, because when I called him, he said all the parts were in stock to rebuild it. And, um, he said that, um, it's a Cummins engine, um, is the manufacturer of it. And he said that if I sent it to Cummins, I would be looking at thirty to forty thousand dollars for a rebuild on it.
Did he give you a estimated turnaround time?
Uh, he didn't. It's, it's tore apart in his shop right now, and all the parts are in stock. So, um, as soon as I call him, with the go-ahead, they'll get the parts on the way and start putting it back together. But with the holidays and everything, I'm sure we can expect a couple of weeks longer than normal.
Do I have any questions?
Two-year warranty, Melanie, as you're always your question.
Oh, I know, that is a question, but I saw that down there. Well, I wanna know, you know?
It's not a bad question.
Yeah, we'll put that on consent as well. We gotta have it. It's all took apart in somebody's shop right now. It sounds pretty good.
Okay.
And the only other thing, oh, just on a personal note, I personally, since we're sitting here and it just popped into my mind, um, I'd like to thank Loganville Ford for the very generous donation that they made to this city, uh, for the decorations at the town hall. I think that was incredible. I've gone down there and spoken to Lance myself, uh, letting him know how much that was appreciated. Um, I think Joanne, Joanne Byrne, and your husband Dustin Riccardi.
Yes.
Tara Argo on the D D A was fantastic in being, heading all that up and getting everything ordered and, and, and getting that done. Uh, Patty, I believe you were there all day. Tara's kids were there. And, uh, I just wanna thank, thank everybody for putting your money where your mouth is and going out and, and just pitching in. I'd like to see a committee, maybe a, a citizen decoration committee. And our citizens were thrilled to be involved, and I'd like to see moving forward, more citizens get involved. And we get out, and we go out, and, and some of the business would like to help. So, I personally want to, uh, before I forget, thanks, I may forget it Thursday. I want to thank Loganville Ford and Joanne and her husband and Patty and Tara for, for all the work you did. Thank y'all.
She's very nice, very nice.
And that's all I have.
Okay, very good, Melanie. Thank you. Public Utilities Transportation, Bill DeVall.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I've got a few items on the agenda tonight. Um, the first one on the agenda is two-eleven Coventry Street, uh, Stormwater Facility. So, as you recall, we, we had, uh, precision planning, uh, developed, uh, developed a plan. It went out to bid. So, we received for developing, removing the old house and, uh, and developing the storm, stormwater facility. So, there were, uh, six bids received, uh, precision planning. Our engineers gone through this, along with, uh, the city. The, uh, lowest responsive bid was by Civil Construction Utilities for five hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, so just, uh, to recap on that, so we, we agreed that, uh, we would split the cost of that, uh, line item, uh, in your, in your, I think it shows, uh, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two twenty-five would, would be from our ARPA funds. And then, and then the other two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, two two-five effectively is coming from the, uh, the library proj- project. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I have a lot of questions on this.
Sure.
Um, I don't even know where to start. Um, being that I live right next door, a lot of times when I'd go out, I would see engineers over there. So, I was fortunate enough to get to speak to multiple engineers that were over there, um, looking at the project. And I don't know if we ever, as we've talked about this over the months, said how much we were willing to put into this. Because I, I said from the beginning, the detention pond's gonna be anywhere from six to eight hundred thousand dollars. And right now, we would be at seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. So, I was, uh, dead bang on, on where I thought it is. And we still haven't addressed all the costs that will be associated with that. And while I do understand that we're splitting it fifty-fifty, with the library, there's some things that still haven't been addressed. As I said, since I met with some of the engineers that walked the property with me, explained to me, I'm not sure anybody sitting up here understands the magnitude of this project and how large that project is and what the impact is gonna be in our downtown area. Um, this project isn't just on that point five seven acres that we purchased. Um, this goes all the way up to Beacon Street. So, when you keep talking about two fifty-four Main Street, your pro- your project that you wanna, uh, a shop at the end and four or five cottages, when you build this detention pond, you kill essentially a good portion of that property. Um, so I believe that part of the cost that needs to be factored in to the cost of the library, because that is, again, property that once again will not generate any tax revenue. It will be something that we've just completely given away to something. And that property has an intrinsic value. And I, I'm not gonna be okay with, we go, well, we, we think it's worth twelve thousand dollars, or we think it's worth this. I think that property needs to be appraised in an actual dollar amount put to the amount of property we're gonna lose by doing this detention pond. And also, when I discussed it and we walked it and we looked at it, we haven't even begun to address the erosion of the creek that's going to occur with the amount of water that's gonna come through that detention pond. Uh, I asked most of the engineers that I spoke with, I said, what happens as you're digging and you hit water? Some of them said, we, we stop right then and we re-engineer and things like that. Some of them said, we just keep digging and it just becomes more like a little lake with a constant runoff. I live, my property backs up to that creek. And when I bought that creek nearly thirty years ago, from my fence line to the, the bank of the creek, was about ten feet. After thirty years of immense runoff and water, uh, because I, it takes the runoff from seventy-eight, takes when they empty the water tank for maintenance, yearly maintenance, they drain all that through the creek. Uh, all the immense amount of water that runs through that creek, as is, has never been addressed. And there are places along my backyard where I'm down to only three feet. So, I've lost seven feet, uh, of erosion. And now you're gonna dump all the runoff from the library where you've clearcut and cemented and asphalted it up. Main Street, whatever you end up putting on two fifty-four, all the additional water you're gonna run, and if they hit water, which is very likely, you haven't addressed what's gonna happen to that creek. And when my barn and my backyard falls into that creek from further erosion, you know, who's responsible for that? So, we need to look at that. The other thing about this detention pond, uh, because the engineers that I spoke to, they didn't know why they were there to build an atten- a detention pond in the middle of a residential neighborhood. They didn't know why they were doing that. And when I told them about the library, everyone of them asked me the same question. Why aren't they looking at putting in underground detention? I said, the only answer I've ever been given is the library says they can't afford underground detention. One of them started laughing. He said, underground detention is gonna be cheaper, cleaner, and less maintenance to build than a, than a above-ground detention pond. He said, you're not gonna have mosquitoes. It's gonna be more attractive. He said, you're, you know, you're killing property value as well. I've talked to realtors. You're killing the property value of the homes in the area there. And I would like, do we have a quote for underground detention? Do we know why the library said they couldn't afford it, how much it was gonna cost? And if we're gonna split detention fifty-fifty with the library, and the last time I heard anything about underground detention from the library, I heard a figure of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I'd rather split three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with the library than, oh, we're at three-quarters of a million dollars. And we still haven't addressed other things like how much money the Beacon Street property is worth, what we're gonna do about the creek when, the commercial property behind me, when part of their property falls in there, and just the sheer magnitude of this project. At its deepest point, this detention pond is gonna be almost ten feet deep. Up along Beacon Street, they have to dig that down six feet. It's a massive hole in the ground in a city that you claim that you want to be a walkable, livable downtown. The man across the street from me paid two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for just one of the homes that he bought. He's put, I would venture to guess, from what I've seen him doing and going inside and touring it, he's probably put a hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that home. I don't believe for one minute that man would've spent over four hundred thousand dollars on a home if he thought his view was gonna be a overgrown detention pond. I just don't think he would've done that. I think when you clearcut all those old pecan trees and you expose Ms. Meyer's home next door, her property value decreases. I think the houses along Beacon Street will suffer. So, I wanna compare apples with apples. I wanna know how much it's gonna cost to put in underground detention. Um, and I want to know how much we, I want an appraisal value of what the property is that we're giving up. Because again, it's not just the five, point five seven acres that we purchased. You're losing a good portion of the property on Beacon Street. And I'm gonna just leave it there, 'cause I'm sure other people have questions, but I will reserve the right to ask more questions.
Sure, just a few points to, to say, too. Um, so, I think the architect's estimate was somewhere around three hundred and fifty thousand, I think you said three seventy-five or whatever, to do the under- underground detention. Um, it's probably somewhere in the ballpark, what we're saying, if it's, if it is total, when you add up the property, the cost that we've got invested in this, it's, it's close to seven hundred and fifty thousand, like you said. You split that, you're, you're pretty close to what the library was gonna pay to start with. Um, and then, so beyond that, it ends up being, it does end up being a benefit for development downtown. Now, you, you, you approached question, uh, about additional erosion. Not gonna say erosion won't happen, but, you know, the, the premise of the detention pond is to, is to capture the water and, and be able to release it in a, in a slower, steadier pace, so that it's, you know, as much, as much that it can be absorbed, can be absorbed, and it can not be overloaded onto the streams below. But, uh, but as, certainly as we develop the downtown, there's gonna be additional runoff. And, uh, it's not additional in the fact that there's, the runoff today's the same. It's just, uh, it's just gonna be pulling it into one area and letting, letting it meter itself out. Um, you know, they are using, uh, in, in, for parts and portions of it, they're using, uh, they're following our design standards, which is, you know, what we wanted. And, um, you know, we're gonna try to do the best we can with, uh, with the, within our, within our, uh, within our covenant. And it's, it's the observations.
Do you know, it might be dandy to answer this, Melanie, is that you, how much land on Beacon Street is gonna be absorbed? Any idea? Any idea?
By the drawings, it looks just, um, it comes into it just a little bit. I, I can find out, if I can get an exact square foot, obviously, if I can find out about tomorrow.
I just wonder, you know, DDA is now working towards two fifty-four and I'm down at Pecan Street. Would that impact that, uh, development?
It could've been how much property they take, yes. But you're gonna have stormwater when you build anything, so.
The, the concept is, just from looking at their plans, it, it squares it up, are my words, I just measured it for you. Looks like it's about, um, a little bit of a quarter of an acre of what I call the two fifty-four lot. I'm not the engineer, I don't know, but I'm just looking at it. I think the concept though is, is that in a two fifty-four development, it's gonna have the ability to feed into this, into this detention pond. Now, whether or not they pre-engineered that extra capacity or not, I don't know. But you could see on the drawings that there is some of the slope that comes into that two fifty-four or broad lot. It does, because of y'all's, what I call your light slope ordinance, it makes it not be a deep, you know, uh, traditional detention pond.
Would the underground pond be able to be used at two fifty-four, or in I'm Down?
So I, I'm not an engineer, but this is the general rule that I've always been taught and seen in projects. Underground detention is usually double or more the cost of traditional detention. Open ditch detention facilities. I mean, when you get underground detention facilities, usually, just in my experience, you're looking at double the cost. So, uh, a downtown project in Monroe that I know that was done by a private developer, uh, they had no other choice but to do detention. Uh, it's actually a client of mine, and the cost was exorbitant. So I don't know where the three hundred seventy-five thousand dollar figure came from, but I don't know. But the only thing I do know is, is that normally what you're told is, is that traditional detention pond work is, um, is the cheapest way to go. Underground detention is much more expensive.
I would probably agree with you, but we're digging up roads and putting in pipes and putting in a thing that'll pump the water from Main Street down there. And again, I met with multiple of these engineers, and every one of them said the same thing, that in this particular case, underground detention is gonna be way cheaper. I mean, like I said, we haven't even factored in any of the other costs, plus we're gonna have forever maintenance on this thing. You're already at three quarters of a million dollars. And again, you ask the library anything, you never get a straight answer. The only answer I ever got about the underground detention was somebody threw out the number of three seventy-five. And if we're gonna split detention with them, heck, let's split three seventy-five. That gives them money back in their pocket on their library, instead of splitting.
Three seventy-five was only, that detention was only for the library site.
Correct.
It did not include the other acres from Town Green.
We haven't built anything at this point that requires further detention.
So what engineers did you talk to, because when I talked to Precision Planning, this is what they recommended, and you're saying they're saying something different? Was it Precision Planning?
Some of these guys that came out and did the bids.
Okay.
Um, the, well, I call them engineers.
Okay, contract, okay. So our engineers, this is what they?
Well, they said they were the engineer or their construction firm, okay. And they're the ones that write the bids, and I think they would know what they're talking about if they're the ones that go out and bid different detention.
Our, our engineers were the ones that wrote the bid. They did the bid back in.
Does, does Precision have a, do they have a quote for underground detention for the library?
No, that was provided through the library's architect.
No, 'cause I mean, you, you'd have to engineer that all.
Right.
You could, I'm sure that engineers could spitball a whole lot better than any of us sitting up here or anybody at the library board could. But the industry's gonna tell you, I don't care, first of all, all this water's gravity flowing, it's all stormwater, it's all gravity flowing, to the lowest point. But the industry's gonna tell you, underground detention is exorbitantly more expensive on the front end and significantly more expensive on the long-term maintenance. It just, it is.
I'm not gonna argue with you, I spoke to the guys that do the work, and they all said, in this instance, it would be much cheaper for the library to have put in underground detention. So we'll agree to disagree on that.
The problem I sleep with honestly is, if we don't go the direction we headed, then we're gonna end up fairly quickly having to do three underground, underground detentions. And they'll tell us what those three collectively would cost.
The greatest, then it won't be violent. If, if somebody buys two fifty-four and they need detention, that would be their responsibility again. This is only a special situation because we're dealing with a library. We wouldn't be seeing this.
Town Green would certainly be out, I don't know how much you would bet.
Well, we haven't built a Town Green, I don't even recall voting on a Town Green.
Correct.
I, I do recall.
I do recall us discussing it, this, this is one of the baby steps to get to downtown development. We're trying to look, uh, look down the road, not, not turn this out on what's happening right now today that we can or cannot use. And I think we also gave one of you guys the, uh, made the motion to not exceed whatever, uh, to go out and explore the retention pond, not the underground. Correct. So that's why we didn't investigate the undergrounds, we, that's what we voted on.
How much was it engineering fees to do this piece?
This was forty-nine thousand.
Uh, hold on, I'm kidding. Forty-six thousand eight ninety-three.
Forty-six, eight ninety-three.
And I'm assuming that, that Precision Planning did the engineering, because we voted in March and in June to send them that direction, correct?
Correct.
So it feels like we're rehashing something we voted on six months ago?
Correct.
Okay.
The only caveat I would add to that, six months ago, we didn't know the cost. We now know the cost, and sometimes hindsight's twenty-twenty, after you find out some of the particulars of something, you might wanna step back and reevaluate. I don't know about this, I'm, I kinda don't know what would be wrong with getting a bid.
I, I don't, I don't understand why we can't find out, so we can compare apples with apples.
Because a bid is free, right Danny?
That was the red, uh, your one?
No, a bid?
I would spend another fifty thousand dollars to get a set of plans drawn, to see, and then go out and bid.
Just like they did.
Our engineer told us, this would be the cheapest route, first underground. The same person that did this Precision Plan.
Well, and Melanie, I might, I might suggest that the people that you talk to wanna do underground detention, detention, because they're the ones that get paid. And if it's double the cost, they make a lot more money if it's underground rather than.
No, they told me it would be cheaper for the, for that particular project, that that one. Not always is it cheaper, but they said that, rather than digging the road up and being, still doing this and building all that. And they said, plus just the location of it and the.
Yeah, but the pipes are separate, are they to build, and all this pipe work we're doing up here and this stormwater replacement, that is somewhat separate. I mean, it feeds it all, but it's, that's just pipes that needs to be replaced, correct?
No, they're putting that pipe in specifically, they're gonna cut off, they gotta dig up the whole, I don't know, I don't do north, south, east and west. The side of the road across the street from me, from the library all the way down, will be completely dug up and a big pipe put in. There's a, down at the lower corner of the library, there's a little collection pool where they'll, I don't know if it's mechan- mechanical or if it's gravity, but it'll pick it up and it'll send it down that pipe. They're cutting off all the sewer there at the corner of Covington and Bobby Boss, that gets cut off. Then they have to dig up Bobby Boss and put in all new, there'll be three drains, two big ones and one small one underneath. Small one underneath is for the continuous water that runs off the ton, and then the two big ones for when they're, when it fills up. So the only thing they're collecting now, the only thing they're building to collect is the water coming from the library. They're not building pipes along Pecan Street or anything else, they're just putting in the pipes strictly for the library.
Well, given, given the fact, I, this is right next to your property, it sounds like you're very much against it. Can you be objective and vote, is that, is that a reasonable?
Absolutely. But the thing is, I've said from day one, if you'll remember, it doesn't belong there.
Yeah, I'll vote it then, so you're gonna. Right, but I mean, we're, we're kinda.
Yes, Brandon, I am gonna complain now, because I'm a voice of the people and the people of the area.
And I think we're.
I should've had that discussion six months ago.
We should have, but y'all don't listen to anything.
We did listen then, and we decided to go elsewise.
That's right, and you've got the votes now.
All right, let's get back on track. I guess we'll take this, our Precision Planning group, which has done a hell of a lot of engineering for us over the years, has always been that stood tall. I guess we'll just wait till Thursday night, take a bid, take a vote, so I wonder, dude?
Can I ask a question, Melanie? So when these guys were out there, when, when, what time range was that?
Uh, well, what more, what was, when Shane Shore, well, when was Shane Shore, the breakfast we had? Was that November twenty-sixth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, so it was all around that.
Did you bring the students' attention at that time?
Did I do what?
Bring that, your discussions with them to anyone's attention at that time, rather than wait till tonight?
I waited till tonight.
Any more questions? I, I just think that what, I'd like to have done this a few weeks ago when you did.
Okay.
Well, I'm just concerned honestly, with the cost of three underground detentions, which is what we probably would have to do if we went in another direction.
Are you, I mean, you're saying that, but you don't know, we haven't even addressed what would be built at two fifty-four.
No, but we're planning for the future, that's all you had to do.
I remember a lot of discussions about the Town Green, which we don't have, we don't know, and it's just what we're gonna do in the future, and we're trying to plan for that as well. It's baby steps to get there.
I, I hear you.
Didn't we ask for an RFQ on that, at one point, the Town Green?
Yeah, I think we did, Brandon. I don't think it ever happened though.
No, it didn't.
It's happened, I have it.
Oh.
I just, I don't, I won't get through the library for us, some other stuff. I do have a lot of stuff. Back to this, I was given a directive, get a retention for the four-acre tract, that's what you have before you. If you do underground, above-ground, you're gonna have pipes, no matter what, water's gotta get through the pipes. You're gonna have to upgrade a downstream with underground retention, you're gonna have to add pipes to the library site to get the water from the library site to the underground detention or to above-ground. So either way, you're gonna have pipes. I can just tell you what the engineers tell me, underground is always more than above-ground. If the city council tells me Thursday to go get another bid, or do another project for my engineer, I'm gonna have to do it. But it's gonna be in excess of another probably forty, fifty thousand. This was discussed with Precision Planning when we first met, what's the cheapest route, this is what we were told.
One of our biggest hurdles for downtown development is water retention. Wonder if I got lucky, they're on top of it, we're in the valley. So every property that gets built would have to have some kind of retention. And how many retention ponds do you want, all down downtown? 'Cause I doubt anybody would seriously consider wanting to build in downtown if that had to pay as much upfront cost for underground retention. So if we have a pond that they can pay into, or pay some kind of fee or some of that to use it, that makes it easier to build downtown and entice people to come downtown. Yes, it's gonna take up some of the two fifty-four land, but it all flows, water flows to the lowest point. So it's something that's easy to put in a trench in. In the original plan that me and Skip did in wheeling the LBA, it was underground retention. We didn't do a cost study or anything on it, but they warned us then, this project might not be super feasible because of the underground retention was so expensive. So.
How many more pieces of land are there downtown that can be developed?
Well, there's two fifty-four that could go into it, and a lot that isn't being used next to the library. So even those pipes, say, it's a part.
But that's the Town Green, right, Brandon?
Yeah, say, say we look at the RFQ from Danny for a new Town Green, and we like it. It's a lot less permeable, or it's very permeable because of might just be like a lot of grass and stuff like that, so it might not handle a lot. We don't know that yet, yes. But if we go ahead and plan for it now, say we underbuild something, then we have to redo it later. So if we go ahead and build a pond now that looks at the incoming growth of downtown development, this is what it looks like, this is planning it all ahead, putting it on paper, putting it in the ground to make it easier for future builds on that side of the street. So I think it's necessary to do this, because if we are serious about doing downtown development, which I believe we all are, we have to have a place for the water to go. And you're not gonna entice anybody here, I'll reiterate that fact, that has to do underground retention on two fifty-four. So if they have to take out one cottage to do that, I don't know, I mean, that seems like a very reasonable ask for me.
If we don't do the Town Green, Brandon, and do actually commercial property to bring in some revenue to the city, which is a good thing, why would we not get the developer to pay for the detention pond? And then deal with it like that, because it seems to me the developer is the one that should be paid.
So the library's paying us for their part of it, correct? So say a developer at two fifty-four comes and builds, they will pay for their part of it as well. So we'll still be getting our money back on this retention pond. Same thing if it's, say, two fifty, say, the other half of the library lot is gonna be whatever we decide is gonna be, and they're gonna have to use that lot or use that retention, they will then have to pay their fair share of it, or maybe even pay to upgrade it at that point, we don't know yet, 'cause we don't know what's going there. But it's better to go ahead and plan ahead for stuff like this, instead of not at all. And, and I know we all just redid our retention, so it's four to one slope. They're not the ugly ones that no one ever gets maintained, this will be maintained by city employees, they do a great job of what they do. And who knows, this could be like a little pocket park or something. I asked Danny earlier, like a, we kinda kidded around about it, goes, oh, because something in there might rust. But no, uh, they make products and stuff that could possibly go, it could be a little pocket park or something that is actually very attractive. People that live next to it might wanna come over there and utilize it as, you know, they could walk, walk all downtown, they could walk right to a park right across the street. Are they gonna be playing with it, in it when it's raining and it has a couple, a few feet of water? No, but Danny would be out there anyway, playing in the rain. There, but when it's dry outside, they could use it as a park. And that's one of the reasons why we redid our, uh, stormwater, was to have not ugly deep pits with fences all around them, that's really hard to maintain. These are made where Z-turns can just go right in there, make it look good.
I would've seen it as pretty detention pond.
I do, I do recall our discussions were to make it look nice and pretty, and then some over the park, to make it look like a park. And, and I do remember our discussions are too, that was, as we build out Main Street, we're gonna do it in phases, the library, the Town Green, where's the water gonna go? And, you know, I don't know what's next after that, but to me, this is, is following right in line with what our discussions have been.
So we're gonna discuss it Friday, I mean, Thursday?
Yep.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay. Next, next item on our agenda is, um, the Stormwater Replacement Project, um, back, uh, Lordy, what? Back in, um, March, um, we, Brandon, um, had, had selected capital recovery projects, uh, that were top priority, um, that's what in these. And I'm sorry, I just, I'll just sit here. These. All right. Yeah, these four sites are, are stormwater pipes that, um, are metal, metal pipes that are rusting. For instance, the weather, the, the, the drives is, is starting to fail itself. And so these are top priority, uh, projects, so Precision Planning, um, set up designs to replace them so that we don't have, uh, you know, a, an event like we had last year, um, over at Breckenridge. And so they went out to bid, we received, uh, we received seven bids. The lowest bid was from, from a Dickerson Group out of Marksville for a, a bid of four hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars. Any discussion question on this?
And that's what I was talking about when I said these other were just replacing the pipe, that's what I meant in the prior discussion.
Okay.
I got just one question, I think again for Danny. Do you foresee any more pipes? I don't know how you find these, I mean, I guess what are people constantly inspecting to see if, so this would be it at least for a while, maybe, hopefully?
These are the top five.
Okay.
That would need to be replaced now. There are more, um.
Five or four?
Um, four, there was five, but we've already took care of one. These, these were his top pipes that need to be replaced, there were several more out there. Corrigan cement pipe, it was big material that was used back in the nineties, two thousand, twenty-year life, it's come today.
Been, come and gone.
That's why we've, uh, That's why we've, uh, in two thousand, I believe, eighteen or nineteen, the city council changed the ordinance to where you could not use corrugated metal on the roads. It has to be concrete pipe or plastic. So that's what this is, is plastic.
Do we know where we've got that?
We do.
Okay, so you're keeping watch.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. You know the life expectancy of the plastic versus the concrete?
I think concrete and plastic's the same fifty years. Uh, of course, it's all based on how it's installed, but in theory, it's the same. I'll confirm that.
What can I know when you wanna put in a driveway if you've come to fill out an application at the city? The city requires concrete.
Concrete, there is a substitution, uh, we do allow sometimes to put, um, this, it's called high density, it's HDPP, like an HDPE pipe. That can be a substitute that's based on an engineer's recommendation. Um, if it's a state road, they do require concrete. Um, anything with, excuse me, where the city road is concrete, but, um, we have allowed HDP like retention pond areas, but no more corrugated metal period unless it's private development.
Everybody okay with that? A bit of consent? With that, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any other actual items.
Okay, very good. Then we'll discuss the other again Thursday night. And then we'll go to public works facilities committee, Patty Ward.
This is a good one. Y'all wouldn't lie, at least I loved it. Uh, the intersection of C S Floyd and Lovin Street where they got that big dip when you turn right to get onto Lovin and your car gets down in that, or you, you know, it's been there for, I know, a long time, Danny, it's been bugging me. Uh, it's gonna be fixed. Uh, what, what I'm asking for tonight is, uh, what Jeremy wants is twenty-one thousand, six twenty-nine with a five, uh, percent contingency of one thousand eighty-one dollars for a total of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Uh, and then I'm hoping, Jeremy, you might be able to confirm this, that when you turn there from after it's fixed, it'll be flat and you won't have to worry about that whole.
Yes, ma'am, that's the plan, to fix the dip, to take it completely off the road.
I love it, okay. Uh, there's two invoices attached because it's two different types of work that have to be done. Uh, but they do total the twenty-one, six twenty-nine. Any questions?
We tried to make that better a couple of times.
Yeah, I remember that, and it just never worked. So hopefully this will be it and we don't have to get our cars out of alignment anymore. So this is good. Uh, but y'all mind if I put this something in? Everybody okay?
Everybody okay? Consider this.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Patty?
I see it.
Then we'll move to economic development committee, Brandon Whitfield.
Thank you, Skip. I have no actual items tonight.
Okay, thank you, Brandon.
I'll talk about the parades on Thursday.
Okay. Now we'll move to city manager report, Danny.
Just happy to be here, mayor.
Yes, I know, not feeling well.
We can tell.
Not feeling well today. And then we'll move on to the city attorney's updates, Paul Rosenthal.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I've got one item for you for your consideration for this upcoming Thursday. So choose, that is the library construction IGA. I know y'all are familiar with, we've been working on this for a long time. Ms. Andrea Gray is here on behalf of the library board as well, along, uh, as well as several other folks from the very important library world. Um, I'll give you a five second overview and then I'll be happy to let Ms. Andrea be available to give you information, answer any questions that you may have, because I'm sure there are some, um, as it relates to this. This is the construction IGA. So go way back, we did the concept IGA back in November of twenty-three, I believe it is. Then we did the design IGA, uh, earlier this fall. And then this construction IGA just simply spells out how the money doles out uh, and confirms the selection that the library board took of the general contractor to build it, which is Garland. Uh, they did that after a bid tabulation matrix from the architects, relying on the architect's scoring sheet. Um, and, um, the bid came in under the five point seven, but when you take the construction plus some of the additional costs, then you're over that five point seven. So there is a shortfall. The contract addresses that. It gives the design committee the ability to scale back the project. If they so choose, that design committee is composed, of course, um, both folks from the library board and folks from the city, uh, as well as Mr. Nate, um, uh, who works with the state on libraries. And, um, it anticipates that they're gonna get building on this in the first part of twenty twenty-five. They're gonna be finished with it before Christmas or around December twenty twenty-five. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and then Ms. Andrea is here as well. She's happy to speak with y'all or answer some of the questions that y'all would like as well. It's all right with y'all, I'll just invite Ms. Andrea up.
For a minute.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's lovely to see you on this December evening. Uh, thank you, Paul, for that introduction. You did a great job, little bit. Sorry. Of course, not all. Working now? Good? Okay, great. All right, well, again, it's nice to see you all this evening. Uh, we do have quite a crew here from our library, um, friends. We've got Stacy Brown, the executive director of Azalea Regional Library. Uh, we've got, um, our architectural representative, Will Bryant, uh, who can answer questions about the bidding process and the cost estimates and whatnot. And then, of course, Mr. Nate Hall from the, the state, who, uh, this afternoon told me he has built over a hundred libraries in Georgia. So, um, he, he certainly knows what he's doing and we have the benefit of having him here tonight. Not all of us can come back on Thursday, so, um, if you could, we'd encourage you to ask any questions you have, um, tonight. Like I say, I think we've got at least one person here that can answer, um, anything that, um, you wanna talk through. So, um, Paul did give you a, a quick overview of the, um, construction IGA, which again is a third in a series of four IGA's uh, that we had planned for this project. Um, this one is relatively simple. It lays out, um, the order in which funds will be utilized. So first, the funds from the state grant, the three million dollars, those will be used completely. Then we will use the city of Loganville funds, the one point five million dollars. And then finally, we'll draw down the Walton County funds of one point two million. So that's the order it will follow. The draw process, um, also pretty simple. It's a reimbursement process, so the library will pay the contractors for the work that's being done. Then we'll submit a draw request to the appropriate party showing the invoices, proof of payment. And then there was a, a draw sheet as an attachment to the IGA. So that will be filled out, submitted to the appropriate party. And then payment will be made back to the library using ACH transfer. Uh, so that is how that should flow. That should be a, a pretty streamlined process, um, for all of our teams involved. Um, also included, um, in the IGA is again, um, a statement, um, that we have awarded the contract. Um, again, it was a competitive bid process that started in October, wrapped up in November. Uh, ultimately, seven firms bid on the project, which was great, had a lot of, a lot of interest, um, in it. Our, um, construction committee team and with the benefit of our professional architect here, um, opened all the bids, went through them, made a decision matrix, very thorough analysis, and ultimately they, um, they, um, selected Garland and Associates at a bid of five point two three, uh, million dollars, which again was under our original budget. Um, so that with the other project cost, uh, as Paul mentioned, uh, will put us over the five point seven million. So as we had always anticipated, um, raising about two million of additional fundraising, uh, we've got a one million dollar application in for another state grant. Um, so that's been submitted. We'll know if we receive that by the end of the legislative session, which is, you know, around the master's time because uh, the legislatures don't like to, uh, work over the master's week. Um, and then if that money's awarded, it'll be in hand by July first. That's when that fund would come through. Um, the friends of the library that are very hard at work, uh, they've only had the site plan or the, the renderings for two months. And, um, as of Friday, they told me they have raised a hundred and five thousand dollars, which for grassroots, um, efforts and only having drawings for two months, I think is incredible. Uh, they've got a lot of other feelers out there. They're, uh, reaching out to key stakeholders in the community. They've got some applications in process. Um, so that is a continuing process, um, in addition to the state grant, uh, that we've applied for to help towards that two million dollar goal, um, that we've always had towards additional fundraising. So with that, um, I'll open it up to, to any questions you have. And like I say, I'll try to moderate and then bring up our experts, um, to answer your specific questions.
Any questions?
I have a lot, but I don't want to filibuster. So if anybody else on the panel has any. I know.
I mean, I have questions.
I'll go glad, I'll be glad to go last.
Do I have any questions myself?
I, I just like to ask, we talk about things on decisions that have not been made. If we've already made the decision and decided to move on, let's just, please don't go back for your ash.
I'm not making any promises.
My question may lead to something that needs to be rehanded. I may need to point out what was said before, so.
But the truth of the matter is, on Thursday night, we're gonna be voting only on the library construction IGA.
Correct.
So that symbol combines to a degree. Okay, who wants to go for a fad? Go ahead and go, roll it.
Oh, you go after me. No, I'm handling it. That's all right. Paul goes after me every time I say the money. Oh, are you sure? I, I have a question.
Hey, I think we just throw a pool out there in my dressing room. I think it'd be a lot more about.
Yes, and you have a question about the bid.
I'm not familiar with it, and I got, I, I got a copy of it this afternoon. I, you know, reviewed it.
Let me call up Will Bryant to oversolve that process.
Let me tell you what, I'm on the allowance form, if you know. The page is outnumbered, so let me see if I can help you a little bit.
Which allowance, which company are you looking at?
Oh, the one that you accepted.
Okay, girl.
Okay, now you, I lost my count. It's your phone. Do you know where the allowance form is pretty readily?
Um, I can get to it.
Okay.
Almost there, guys. Type out alternates or allowance?
Allowance form. It's document.
Sorry, yes.
Got it.
Sorry, I was looking for alternatives.
Oh, that's all right.
Yep.
Ready?
Yes.
What, uh, off the top, what's the difference between base bid and bid supplement? Am I looking at the supplement as opposed to, are they different?
So the, the purpose of that form is to allow the contractor to more clearly specify where their allowance is going to, if it's a part of the base bid, or which means that the allowance is included in the overall number that they apply it on. Exactly.
Got it.
Or, or whether it is subtracted from that, and if it's not used, then it's not included in the base bid. And in this particular instance, Garland, um, said it was a part of the base bid.
Okay, so that number A and B, where it says, uh, include the sum of twenty thousand for LED monumental sign, that's included in the five point two?
Yes, ma'am.
And the second one that has the three thousand for something lump, lump sum allowance to include reply?
Yes.
Uh, that's included?
Yes.
Okay, that I was confused, don't they? Now, if you, on my copy, if you just go to the next page that says unit prices, I don't know how you got yours lined up.
Yes, and I apologize, I sa- I scanned this and then I, I took the bid that I had taken all apart and I didn't get it in order, I realize after.
It's.
I look at it now.
I don't know the difference.
But, but yes, u- unit prices.
Yes, now, uh, down number A, where it says removal of unsatisfactory soil and replacement, is that in addition to the bid? To the five point two, then?
Yes.
Should that happen?
Yes, so what the unit prices are, if they encounter something as they're digging, that they don't know what it is and we don't know that it's there.
Okay.
And what it allows us to do, sorry, my voice is going too loud right now, but, um, what it allows us to do is fix that cost so that, um, as they're going along, we don't get charged astronomical change order number. What they can do is give us a quantity for what they've encountered, and then we have a measurable way and say, okay, this is what you said your unit price was. Um, and that's what we're gonna deal, that's how we're gonna deal with it. Um, some of these, like, you never know how much rock you might encounter, for instance. Particularly around here, you may hit stone mountains. Um, but, uh, you know, we, uh, we definitely, that, that's one of the reasons why we like to include that, make sure that, um, there is a way for us to compare apples to the apples because a site contractor can come in and start jacking up the price if you don't lock that in.
Well, that, tha- thank you. Uh, let me just make mention for the citizens. Uh, we don't know if this is gonna happen, you know, if he's gonna encounter rock or whatever. But I'm gonna give you a rundown of the things that are gonna cost additional money, should they encounter them. So you'll have an idea that potential of the five point two million is not fixed. It could go up, probably will. Uh, removal of unsatisfactory soil and, um, replacement, that is sixty-five dollars per unit. Is that like, what's a unit? Anybody know?
So, um, that is, it's usually, um, per yard of material. So I, I, I think that I'm speaking off the top of my head, so please be, give me some grace there. I forget what it is off the top of my head.
Okay, that's fine. Next one is mass rock es- excavation, I can't even say that word, and replacement. Uh, one hundred thirty-five dollars per unit, again, whatever the unit is. Uh, ductile iron pipe sewer line replacement, uh, a hundred and sixty-five dollars per unit. Uh, sod installation, uh, one dollar and thirty-five cents. So that would tell me they're probably gonna install the sod, right?
Yes.
Doesn't sound like much money.
Yes.
Uh, seven dollars and fifty cents, again, doesn't sound like much, uh, to silt fans, what's that?
So that's an erosion control measure fence. It's the fence that they put up as they're doing, uh, as they're doing site.
Okay, thanks for your.
Usually orange or black?
Usually orange.
Oh, on the bottle, on the bottle. I know they've got brown over.
Yeah, also.
Where they, you know, your fence, like, where they're.
It's black. Standard colors, standard color, colors are black and orange.
Yep, and, and that's, it's a temporary fence.
Thank you. Uh, I'm through, I think, with probably your category. Melanie, you wanna take some questions now?
He's talking about the bid process. What I want, I just had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was a little surprised that the bid opening process was on November twentieth, and by the twenty-third, you'd already awarded the contract.
Those dates are wrong, Melanie. Oh, okay. I'm sorry to interrupt, but they.
Okay, 'cause I was just gonna say, anything, um, of projects of this magnitude, it usually takes about two weeks to level up all your bids. And then, you know, to, on the week before Thanksgiving, to get architects to even answer questions. So if the dates are wrong.
I believe they start in October.
Well, how about the day they actually open the, the bid opening process?
I, I still think the day.
Was that November the twentieth?
Yes, it was November.
And then you awarded the contract on the twenty-third.
Sure.
Twenty-second, I believe.
Yeah.
Sorry, the twenty-second.
Sure. Um, and quite frankly, yes, I was working over the weekend.
Okay.
Um, we, uh, we're, it is important for us, we are trying to get this library open. We wanna be expeditious. We feel like it's taking a long time already, and we want to move quickly. Um, the, uh, and we're sort of in that period where, um, where rain can start, raining cold weather can start to affect things, so the earlier a contractor can get started the better in this period of time, just so that it can, that construction can go more smoothly.
And the, the bid of five two, um, it says the, um, the architect fees in geotechnical testing totaling approximately four hundred and five thousand. Is that factored into the five two, or is that in addition to?
That, so I'll, that's an addition. That, so all, that's in addition to.
As an addition to?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not in there.
Uh, Melanie, I have a question. Mr. Mayor. Our discussion in this vote is about the IGA. From a FOIA water perspective, can we stick to what we have control and authority to talk about? Because the bid's been done, the bid's been accepted. I, I mean, I think that there's meat in the IGA that might need to be discussed. And we're, we're, we're grinding on stuff that's, we have no control.
Well, there's some agreement there. Uh, I would, I'd like for everybody to be as comfortable as they can be and get the information they feel like they need to have. Uh, but again, we started this out talking about, we talked about this IGA. That's what we both done on Thursday. The things that was mentioned that could change the cost is the same things that are mentioned in every construction project. Anywhere around here, when you got Stone Mountain sitting down there. It's no different than any other building that's been built in the last fifty years. Every one of them has to be aware that things can happen, that you can't foresee. I mean, that's reality. So, uh, I agree. Uh, if, if we can go in that direction, I would love that. That's the way we plan to go to start with. Yeah, I'm in charge.
Well, I mean, my questions.
I don't wanna be a referee of it.
Well, my questions involve, we're asking to, we're asking to give money to build a library.
No.
I want to know.
They've already done that.
They've already done.
But how much are we actually giving at this point?
We're gonna give one point five million dollars.
And then we have the detention pond. So you gotta.
Which is talking about our one point five million dollars.
Right.
So the three seventy-five that we talked about, or the three eighty-whatever, comes off of the one point five million. It's not one point five million plus the detention pond. Correct? Am I right?
That's right. Yes, that's correct.
So sorry.
Half of the detention pond comes from us, half of the detention pond comes from them. And it comes from them through us paying for it and mending it out of the one point five.
Correct.
It's still to this day, one point five.
But we're gonna be signing a contract here that says that after we sign this contract, this construction grant. They can turn around and go into a meeting and decide to, decide to reduce the size of the library.
That is something we can discuss.
Then let's discuss that.
That's part of the IGA, but, but the, the awarding process, the bid process, the page of the cadipuses, how much the soil and the sod. That is not part of our, our purveyance here.
We don't, here's the problem that I see. We take things that are of this magnitude, and the only time we really, we really and truly get to talk about them is in this room. We don't meet, we can't, because we can't have a forum. So if I'm frustrated, it's because of the process. We get handed this a hundred hours ago. First time I've seen it. It's nobody's fault up here. I was on vacation. I'm still trying to do the best I can even being on vacation, but in anything we do. And then I get people up here going, well, we already talked about that. Yeah, for five minutes in a room. And, and because there's a majority vote, and I get that, yeah, we are gonna feel a little with our backs up against the wall. We never get to discuss anything.
We have not discussed the library for five minutes. I'm so sorry. That's just not true.
Well, you, um, that was a.
I mean, we have talked about this. I mean, and I think, Paul, you sent this out a week and a half.
Okay.
I understand you're on vacation, or a week, at least a week ago.
No, I, no, not really.
Yes, I landed, came back straight from the airport.
December, uh, yeah, like this, this second, yeah.
Sent it out to y'all on Sunday evening.
A week ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sunday.
And I, I knew you were on vacation, but, but I mean, here's the thing. I, I have some concerns about the IGA as well, and the redu- reduction and how that's gonna work. But I don't think there's anything that could be said about this IGA that would make you vote for it.
Probably not.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that I'm not gonna do my job and I do diligence.
Oh, I'm not saying I'm not doing my job, but I just wanna keep it into the scope of.
But I would like to understand how that's gonna work. We vote to give them the money, then they can go in a room and go, hey.
We already voted to give them money. Wanted to have.
Well, I mean, but you know what I'm saying, like, but you can vote for not for this tonight, and it's, you know, you could vote not for this tonight.
Well, you can, but I'm sure there's gonna be some severe repercussions.
Yeah, I mean, we can vote to not do the IGA. We can ask for.
And it doesn't end, if that's the case, it won't end tonight.
But nothing's gonna change the one and a half million that we've already agreed and voted.
Right, I got that. I'm not trying to, but I understand that, but I wanna understand why we're not being told how big of a library we're gonna get before we actually sign a contract.
Well, can I add something to that?
Let me clarify on that.
Anybody?
Hang, hang on, let me clarify on that, ma'am. All right, go ahead.
Anybody that's building a building, whether it's your home, or whether it's our office building, or whatever it is. They send out what they've built, to get back the bills. If they don't have the money for it, it sure as heck can't be built. In that same size. So it is conceivable that if we were to come up short, they may have to do some adjustments. I mean, that's part of the business. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the, the design IGA that we, that we entered into back in September delineated the size of the library. The design IGA also controls the scope of it as it relates to the size, excepting the shortfall that you're now considering. And if y'all wanna address and talk about the shortfall issue, you can. And just to be clear, the committee is not the library board. The committee is two members of the library board, two members of the city, and Mr. Nate from the state. It's five folks that have what I would call equal representation, right? Sort of forty, forty, twenty split. But the size of the I, of the library was agreed upon in the last IGA at ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square feet. So that was agreed upon, and y'all already agreed upon it. So it's not accurate to say that we don't know what size the library was. Now, there is the discussion, and I know that they're prepared to talk to you about it, and, and probably also your committee members on that committee are prepared to talk to you about it. How do you address the shortfall between either raising money or adjusting scope? And I think they're gonna talk to you about value engineering solutions, right? Which don't mean changing the square footage, but may mean changing the quality of materials, you know, seed versus sod, whatever it is y'all wanna talk about. But the size of the library, everybody agreed upon when we took those really big fancy plans, exhibit B to the design IGA, or exhibit C, and put them into that design IGA. We've already decided that. Y'all already decided that.
Council approved that, yes. And it's a legal, you, you stood, I got it last session, to let everybody know it was a legal issue at this point.
And the bids were based on those design drawings.
Yeah, it's a legal issue. We can't do anything even if we wanted to, I don't think. Correct, Paul? That's true for number one and number two IGA. Uh, I just wanna make a observation. For those that complain because we're asking a question, or we're doing something going back a little bit, asking a question that's already been discussed, and all that sort of stuff. We spent a lot more time discussing that just now than it took me to ask the questions. Uh, sometimes it's best just to let things roll, because everybody gets, it should get the opportunity to say what they feel they need to say. A lot of what I say, ninety-nine percent is for these people sitting right out here. And I'm not gonna let you take that away from me. I don't care if we've discussed it previously or not, cause I don't know what they know, how they know it. I don't know if they know that construction normally has overruns. I don't know what anybody knows, so I try and keep it simple. But we, and I'm wasting more time talking about it, but for the time y'all sat here and went back and forth, we could've moved on and been long into this.
I gotta be, if I'm totally honest, most of the questions are coming from people who don't want to collaborate. Let's be fair. That's true. Uh, I get offended when I read on social media that somebody feels like the council screwed the citizens a little bit.
They did.
And by God, that is not proper. We are doing the best job as a council to do the best job for this city. And don't shake your head, Cat.
You don't.
That's not what you're out there for. You're not for, you're not for this conversation.
Hold, hold on, guys. I ain't really getting off the rails.
Yes, we are.
Let's stick to the IGA.
So.
I will start with the IGA in my concern, because I have one. Is that, if that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
My frustration, as it was in the last council meeting, is that we approved and moved forward with the IGA in twenty twenty-two. And the Friends of the Library has raised a hundred thousand dollars of the two million. I don't think that that was the intent. I still stay with what we want, with, with how it all went down. And Ms. Gray, she so eloquently put our feet to the fire in our last meeting. Um, I am concerned if we reduce the footprint of the building immediately on phase one. That we'll never get it back to where it should be, and that's something I would like to discuss and address, because I don't know how that happens. It feels like to me that once you decide to build a smaller house, it's never gonna get built. You're never gonna build on it. So I would like to, for y'all to address how that's actually gonna actually be. If that's appropriate, if anybody knows anything.
That's fine.
We need two mics up here. Um, so yes, thank you for your question. Uh, we did, in the design IGA, uh, put the square footage of the, the ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square foot for phase one, and that's what we bid out. And that's what we're intending to build. Uh, design engineering, um, sorry, comes in to play, um, with finishes. With maybe we take the furniture from the current library and use it in the new library for a little bit until we can raise additional funds. Um, the intent is to build the full phase one, uh, that was laid out in the design IGA. Um, and again, funding sources, the IGA, the first IGA was November twenty twenty-three. So I guess they've had about a year since we signed that IGA to, um, to do the fundraising. A hundred and five thousand dollars is impressive to me. It may not be to you, but I know they're working very hard. And again, uh, applying for the additional one million dollar state grant, so, um, you know, we're sitting at about one point one million of additional funds right now to ensure we can get that square footage.
Well, I guess my, my concern is what you just said. You said our intent is to build the ten eight thirty-three. And I'm pretty sure that the Friends of the Library's intent was to raise two million dollars.
Absolutely.
So where does that live?
Well, you can adjust the shortfall provision if you want to, and we get agreement from the library board. Because really, you could interpret it that we've already locked this in, because the size and the scope of it per the design IGA can't change without both board, library board's approval and y'all's approval. So blame the lawyers who came in on a Sunday after Thanksgiving to get this contract out to y'all. Um, that the shortfall language, the intent of the shortfall language is for value engineering. So if your concern is the size of the scope, number one, I would highly suggest that y'all have discussion with two board members who are here. Both Brandon and Danny as to their intent, but the intent of the shortfall provision. Hang on, let me get it, since everybody loves to go by these contracts. Section, paragraph six of section A was to address value engineering components. So if you wanted to, if y'all are intent, or if y'all have an interest in passing this construction IGA. As drafted with the change, and I can do the change before Thursday, that this budget shortfall concept. Only allow to be applied to value engineering components, and that the heated square footage of the project cannot be less than as agreed to in the design IGA. Then we'll, we can work with the library board to see if they can do that.
I mean, my intent is to pass an IGA for construction, but I like what you just said very much.
I mean, I, I know what everybody's concerned is, but also, let's talk practically for a minute, cause everybody wants to talk about what may happen, what may not happen. Practically, the shortfall running my math, right? Which is just a lawyer's math, is somewhere around eight hundred to a million dollars, eight hundred thousand to a million dollars, shortfall. Taking into account the following things, the engineer's fees, landscaping, new FFM. And their half of the store owner, okay? And that's not an exact number. I just, that was literally spitballing. So it's between eight hundred and a million. So if you get the million, which you'll know by February, March, end of March from the state legislature, then that shortfall goes away. They've raised it and you build it. If you get it, plus the mil- the hundred thousand they've raised, and maybe they've raised another hundred thousand between now and then, or five hundred thousand. But if, if the issue is that shortfall language, I don't think the intent of this agreement was ever to say, we're just gonna build a smaller library. Because the design IGA says if we can't, without agreement of both the city council and the library board. I think the intent of the shortfall, and Andrea can speak up to this, is value engineering. Okay, we've got a budget problem. We're gonna go buy the Home Depot windows instead of the Pella windows, or whatever. Okay? Or we're gonna use, use, we're, well, we're gonna use used furniture.
Just for a little bit.
Uh, you know, instead of new furniture, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, no, that is the intent, but with regard to the calculation of the shortfall, I just wanna make sure we're crystal clear and transparent. Uh, that total did not include, um, the contingency. And so honestly, for us, we're looking at a, um, a, a, a two million dollar fundraising goal as we always have been. And so I just, I'd rather put the larger number out there to you all so that, you know, we can, you know, beat expectations. But just, just to be clear about what it could potentially be. But yes, the intent is to value engineer, to build the full phase one square footage. Um, Walton County did approve this at their meeting last week, and we approved it at our meeting before. I guess the attorneys would have to figure out if that's a material change or not, and would warrant another board vote.
Does your two million dollar fundraising, that includes the one million dollar grant that you've applied for, or that's in addition to?
Yes, no, that's not any, that's total. That's what, that, that's our, our goal total.
Okay, and they're all, okay, and they're all confused, cause a while ago, I thought you said the, if you, you would know when you got the grant would be after the masters. And that'd be around, I mean, is Paul correct that you would know in February or whatever?
Well, when the legislature adjourns, right? They, they would have to vote on this plan before the end of the session. And I just know the session usually ends right before the masters week, but they could decide earlier. They could vote on it in January, they could vote on it in February. We can't quite control when they vote.
Mr. Roth, do you know when the, they would know if they got that grant or not?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, or excuse me, is this evening?
It's the evening.
And council. Um, typically, we have an idea around February, March timeframe. The session is a forty-day session. Session usually ends end of April. But we have feelers, and like I said, around February, March, we kinda know what's gonna happen.
Oh, do you know the name of that grant? Like, would it?
It's a capital W, like, right?
Just the one?
A capital W, right? It's an additional capital W grant. When I saw that there was gonna be a shortfall, I asked the executive director if they wanted to. Me to help them, uh, submit an additional grant for nine hundred thousand dollars. It's nine hundred thousand dollars is the grant. The match is one hundred thousand dollars. That's where the million comes from.
Let me ask you this. Is it, is it common, you've built a hundred libraries, is it common, um, knowing you're going into a, a library build. That's gonna have a shortfall. Is it, is it common to break ground before you do have all your full funding? Because what I'm afraid of is we're gonna start building it, the grant doesn't come in, they don't raise the money. We're, we've got a building that got, and I don't have my glasses on, are you, are you trying to pay attention to what I'm saying, or are you scowling at me? Cause I'm not trying to be.
No, I'm not scowling. It's just the way I look.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, cause if y'all are, I'll try to, I'll try to rework my question.
I'll turn my pride off that.
He's scowling at.
Well, I couldn't tell. I don't have glasses to see that far, and I didn't wanna make him upset with me. But like, is it, is it common to break ground? Because then you could get so far into a project, they don't get the nine hundred thousand, they don't raise any more money. And then everybody would be sitting here knocking on our door going, hey, we got a shortfall, but look at that nice shell of a building over there. What you gonna do about it? Uh, I'm really trying, I don't want, I don't wanna have that situation.
And you shouldn't have that situation. The process is, we hire a contractor, we go to negotiate pricing. So that's where the value engineering comes from. We will probably value engineer a good portion of this project to meet budget. And then if we have additional funding come in, then we could go back and, you know, rework the engineering that may have come out of the project.
I know, and, and you know, I'm just gonna be honest, that word, those word, that phrase scares me, value engineering.
What does it mean?
It feels like you're getting.
Value engineering means, for instance, um, I don't know, somebody over here, we talked about the type of windows. So we're gonna, oh, lighting, we look at lighting, uh, the.
So, uh, value engineering, the easiest way to think about it is, you're trying to figure out if you're removing costs. Whether that cost is actually worth removing, if it's actually providing you value, removing it from the project. So let's say you were building this desk up here, and, and you said, and you decided, okay, well, it could be plastic, or it could be wood. The plastic is gonna be a lot less expensive, but it's gonna fall apart in two years. The wood is gonna be around for a hundred years. It makes sense in that particular instance, the, the value is not there to take the plastic. So sometimes it's a cut, sometimes it's a look at it and say, okay, that's, the value is not there to take that. So the idea is that you're really looking at what you're cutting, making sure that it's of value to remove it from the project. So.
That does, cause what I was feeling was, we're not gonna put in the windows that are gonna last twenty-five years. We're gonna put. We're going to put in the windows that last ten years. And while it looks good on the front end, ten years from now, we're sitting here coming up with the money anyway. That doesn't make sense to me.
I'll, I'll give you a, for instance, we have curtain wall called out on the project in some places. There are places where we could, we could actually use storefront with a little bit of redesign to that, and it would make it cheaper. Storefront is just not designed to span as long of a distance. So you just have to redesign it a little bit, but we can get it to the same basic look. And it would be the same basic material. Curtain wall is just a structural component that takes up that whole thing. So, you know, it's, we would try not to compromise quality because that compromises your value.
Are you saying the shortfall you're trying to rectify, is that for the five point two or the five point seven? Or are you trying to reduce the total cost? Does that make, am I making sense? Because I should be.
It's to, to build what you have in the bank. That's what value engineer. We know we have five point two million. And that's what we're trying to build to.
Okay, the reason you wouldn't be able to do that is?
Because projects come in more than we, uh, we we bid about, we think we know what it is, but when the contracts come back, they're higher. Just like the retention bond, we thought it was going to be three hundred fifty, came back five hundred thirty-six.
So if you get a bid and the bid's accepted, then the contractor isn't held to that amount of money?
The contractor is held to the amount, yes, but you reduce the scope of the work to get your, your contract down to meet budget. Or you give more money. That's the only two options. Pretty much any project we do in the city, or the last project we done are always came in higher than we funded. So we value engineer, or we produce more money to keep the same project. That's your two options.
Is there any way, Paul, I think this might be a legal question, that we can put in the I G A to assure our city, i.e. citizens. That the shortfalls, which we already know we have some, we don't know how many, how much, um, will be borne by the library?
That's already in the agreement. It's clearly in the agreement. Yes, ma'am.
Where is it? Do you know right off?
I do, as a matter of fact. It is in subsection six, paragraph B. It is the last or the only sentence, I guess I should say. And the library system will seek additional funding to cover the shortfall between the new library funding sources and the bid prices were for the construction project.
That's just if they cannot agree on the reduction though, right?
No, ma'am, it's not.
Oh, well, it's in that same paragraph.
Correct. If they cannot agree on ways to value engineer the project per section six A. Then section six B will control, which places the obligation to shortfall on the library board, not on the city.
Okay. Period the end.
Yes, period the end, again.
Okay.
You have a question?
So just.
I'm, oh, go ahead, Bill. Do you have a question?
I do. I just, just looking at the timeframe, we we've got, we've got a bid, we're, we're looking to go. Moving forward, and you're putting a completion in December of twenty-five. But obviously, we've got other funding that's going to come in. So how realistic are we looking at as far as those time, the timetable windows? You know, we know in February, we have a good feeling, you know, how this process is going. And and really, that's today. I mean, once you're, you've done a hundred of these things, you've had, I'm certainly similar scenarios. Is this timeframe, is it, is it still a reasonable? I'm not saying it's perfect, but is it reasonable?
It's reasonable. I mean, this is a ten thousand square foot building. Typically, a ten thousand square foot building, you know, nine months, twelve months, somewhere around that timeframe. It's, it's a simple design. It's, it's an open plan, so there's not a whole lot of, uh, uh, construction walls and all that inside a building, so. I see that easily happening. Okay?
I have a question about the allocation of the funds. Three million first, one point five second. Uh, then the county, one point two, I believe, if it is right.
That's right.
Of the one point five, when do we get our money back that we paid on behalf of the library? Oh, well, the detention pond comes to mind.
They're deducted from the.
When? When?
So we don't pay it to them, then we deduct, deducted from our liability.
Yes, that was addressed in the second I G A.
I cannot find that, Paul. You told me that. I couldn't find it. But so.
I'll read you that one if you'd like me to. Handwrite.
Okay. Um, so immediately, basically?
Parties agree that cost of initial acquisition, design, construction, installation, the off-site stormwater detention system shall be equally shared between the parties. And the library system may utilize the local funding sources budgeted as part of the new library project to pay for its portion of the same. Put in layman's terms, not lawyer's terms, the, as we said, when we passed this design I G A in September of this year. The stormwater portion of the money, the half that is the library's obligation, will net out of the one point five million in ARBA funds. That your prior council approved to spend on the library.
Okay, I think my question is, when will it net out? I mean, if, we we're going to get the detention pond potentially, but it don't.
Our outflows are never going to exceed one point five.
Okay.
I mean, it's just real simple. One point five.
So we're not going to fund it for some point in the future to get our money. We're going to, uh, I just want to make sure that we're not going to pay seven hundred, whatever it is, for the detention pond. And then six months later, get, uh, you talking to any?
You've already got the one point five million.
One point five is weak to our money now, anyway.
And you've already spent some of the money, some of their half money towards the detention pond in the acquisition of the dirt.
Right, yes.
And you will prob, and and engineering. And you will, if you vote on that detention pond item on Thursday and approve that, then whenever that project is completed and Danny writes a check to whomever won the bid. Then that money will come out of that one point five million ARBA allocation.
Okay, so there are no delays in other words?
I think your concern may be, as we're going along, and we haven't fit, done the detention bond. And we're paying the back, paying the back, paying, and then we're at one point four, but we haven't allocated for the three hundred seventy-five grant. So the one point five, almost that three seventy-five kind of comes off the top, and you would not, you would not reimburse them more than the one point five, less their half of the detention.
And that's because if your staff has already done that on your agenda right here, your staff has already allocated half of it to come out of ARBA.
Okay.
And it's coming out of that ARBA one point five.
Okay, thanks.
I'd love to say a couple of things about being on the committee with Danny and Nate. Is there a good being on the committee with somebody who's built over a hundred libraries? So when I have questions, I talk to Nate. He gets them. He understands that this isn't nothing I haven't encountered before. He's the man with the plan. He's called, was it Nate the Great or Nate from the state? Either one, really good man, very knowledgeable. I feel like sometimes me and Danny are there just to smile and make sure the city's in the room. Um, but, but that said, I do have a question for you, Nate, because I know we've talked about this previously. But I want to make sure everybody on the council knows this. How often can you apply for these grants to the state? And I ask this for future, say, we get this library done, say, we have some money left over. When could we start on doing the next things?
There's no, there's no limitation on how many times you can go to the hall or to the, to the, to the bank. You have to have support, so you have to have legislative support. And typically, there's discussion prior to an application being submitted, if a legislator was going to support that. I've had projects go back three or four times. I've had other projects ask, and I've had legislators say, no, don't ask. We're done. But there's no, I'm not going to look at anyone and say, no, I'm not going to accept your application.
Awesome. Because I, I asked that question, as it was asked to me earlier this week. How long until the next one? And if we go ahead and use this money on this project, the state may not want to give us money when it comes to expansion. I said that.
This particular project is designed as a phase project, so everyone knows that we are doing a first phase. And then in the future, we'll do another phase. We don't know when that second phase is going to happen. It could happen two, three years from now. But that shouldn't be a problem. We're not going to not, uh, we're not going to deny an application that comes to us.
You're not retiring anytime soon, right?
I'm not going to deny an application.
Thank you, Nate. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
And also, being on this committee, we've never once talked about, I think we all understand value engineering at this point, so I don't want to belabor that fact. But it never once came up through our committee that we're going to reduce the scope of the size of the building. We're going to fight for every square inch we can, because that's one of the biggest things about the other libraries. It's not a lot of, all the square footage isn't usable currently, while this one, we're trying to get it built and designed. So every square inch is utilized. So we're going to fight for every square inch. So we're not, like, I know we might want to change the language. I don't know if that's worth it or not. If that's what council wants to do, that's fine. But just know going in, even if that doesn't change, me and Danny, and I think the rest of the committee aren't going to change the size of the, the footprint.
Intent, Brandon, means nothing in a legal environment, to me, anyway. Uh, I can intend to do all sorts of things, but if the, the legal contract says you're allowed to do it, then pitch comes to shove, you're allowed to do it. And we're sitting here going, but this, you know, blah, blah, blah. I think if we, if we want to change that, we need to do it in writing to make sure we are legally protected.
That's fine. That's what council wants to do. I'm, I'm fine with that. I just don't know the, that would be for the lawyers to discuss how to do that and get back to us. But I'm sure it might not be the end of the world. But I just wanted to know our intent of doing that. We never once had a conversation about reducing the size. Of, what was under the verse?
How did they get in, how did they get in the I G A then? Who put that in there?
I'll rehash that one for you too. Sunday night, came home from a nine day vacation, came in late to the office to get this I G A out, out to you guys. Because I knew you were going to be concerned about it. So here's what we do. Andrew and I can discuss this issue. Intent does matter in the law, and I understand what y'all's intent is. You don't want the square footage to go down. But everybody understands the reality that there is a potential shortfall sitting here now. We need to do some value engineering. Andrew and I will discuss it, and we will, I will communicate with you before Thursday on the issue. I think that there's two potential approaches. One could be to modify that section, section six A, but we do have to think about other boards that have passed it. I think the other reality of it is, is that we can read the design I G A and this construction I G A in tandem. Because you do that very much so in legal interpretation. And the design I G A says that we cannot reduce the size of the foot, footprint of the project without approval from both boards. So we'll get back to you on it. I do hear what I think is the council's intent on it, is that you don't want the size shrunk. But you understand that value engineering is going to have to be a component of the project potentially. Unless, you know, one million and two hundred comes, comes through the pipeline between now and next summer.
Is that, I mean, that was my position. Are you guys, I feel that, you certain, Brandon?
I think scope needs to be lifted. I don't think it should be reduced. I don't think it should be hanging out there as an.
That's already in it. That can't be reduced.
That's in the design I G A currently.
That's correct.
But I understand the confusion about the difference between the two. Give Andrew and I, because I have nothing else to do tomorrow. Give Andrew another twenty-four hours to work on it, and we will circle back with some input for you on which is the best path to take on that.
My understanding, the county's already approved this.
The county and the library board have both already approved this agreement as presented.
That could put us, but we have to, correct?
That's right.
No, ma'am, it does not.
Okay.
But I would prefer to take a vote on Thursday as it's written. A lot of thought, a lot of efforts going into this. We're covering everything in directions. Time to move on with it.
I bet we need to go to that with home.
So you don't want us to?
I don't see the need. I really don't.
It doesn't bother me either way. If the attorney tells us it doesn't need it, then I'm fine with that as well. But if it's something council wants to, wants to do, I'm, I'm fine with it either way.
But Paul, if it's changed, does it not have to go back to the library board and help go back to county?
That's why I'm asking you to give me twenty-four hours to give me the insight on that. I, I think that's debatable. I think he could, that is a legitimate debate. I think, I think Andrew and I need a little bit of time to process that.
Fair enough.
And we give you that, and we, I'll give you that opinion in an email tomorrow sometime before the day is out. Um, on what Andrew and I are able to put our heads together on. And I think that there's a legitimate argument either way.
And that's not something we can just cover, cover in a motion then. Can't, is it?
Yes, y'all can cover it in a motion, but the issue is, is whether or not we got to go back to the other, uh, adopted bodies for their, them to adopt the revised agreement.
No, no, what I always wondered is, is you, you, you're saying that previous agreements said this is the size. We're, we're thinking that this is okay, is it not, if we were to go make our motion, not just to approve it, but to say, hey, just reiterate that it is tied to the end, that the size still counts?
Yes, absolutely. And that's kind of what my plan is, is to flesh it out with Andrew and probably even have email communicate between the lawyers. With that understanding to further solidify it, because intent does matter in interpretation of contracts.
Okay. That's fair enough. If, uh, Paul, if you're okay with this, I would like to go ahead and do the public comment before we go into executive session. Because I know, once we leave here for executive session, there's going to be very few faces left with us. So this is the time where every, everyone with the public has an opportunity to speak whatever they have on their mind. Time, five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Miss Taylor?
Don't plop me till I might get up there.
But get, but get, get on.
I'm fine.
Fine.
I ain't got no scooter.
No, you're fine.
Hello, city council and mayor, attorney, city manager and sweet thing. I'm Joyce Davis, four four two one, Beacon Street. Earlier, I made a, kind of like a survey, I guess. I went door to door. Lot of people didn't even know about a library that was supposed to go up. A lot of them wondered why they couldn't just tear down the old one if it was that bad and building new one right there. But the majority of them didn't like it being on Main Street. Uh, where they was afraid, when it's all finished, that, uh, they might be in a big financial, uh, place that they can't afford. So I think that they, we need to know, in the future. How much is all of this going to end up costing the residential citizens? Who pay their tax and, uh, and, you know, whatever, like y'all. Uh, so I wonder about that too. But now here's the thing. I've lived a lot of years. I've done a lot of business. I've been in great business places myself. Common sense, this is just my common sense, no law, no this or that. I would not consider a groundbreaking. Until all the funds from here and here and there and back there, and the promises and everything are put in a pot. And then proceed with what's to be going on. Because if you get the cart before the horse, which I feel has already been took place, uh, it can go nowhere but downhill. So as an elder. So as an elder senior citizen, I'd like for y'all to take what I just said, if you understand it, to heart. When you come Thursday to vote on the construction, how the, the citizens of this town do not want it. Not saying they don't want a library, they don't want the construction there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy, you got your handle?
My name's Kathy Swanson, I live at nine oh four Lee Bird Road. I think that we all know that the library is coming. I think that Skip, Brandon, Lisa, I don't think you understand where a lot of the citizens are coming from. It's not the point that there's going to be a library, it's the point that we weren't included. We weren't given updates. The first I G A was shoved down our throat the night before the election. The second I G A came out, and you decided on the design, nobody showed us, we didn't have any idea until the, the council meeting. We had originally one piece of property given, and then we turned around and gave them another piece of property, and nobody knew about it. I think the biggest problem is, whether it be federal, state, whether it be local, whether it be city, all of this is taxpayer funded, the government does not generate income. So all of it is taxpayer funded, and we have the right to know. We have the right to be kept informed, we have the right to be updated, we have the right to have our questions answered. And so I think I've talked to maybe three people that have actually said, I don't want a library. Most of them have said, I don't understand what's going on, because nobody will tell us, nobody will keep us updated. So we think you're just up here making decisions, not telling us what's going on, not telling us what's going on behind closed doors. And the bottom line is, we're footing the bill, and we're going to foot the bill, and we're going to pay for the maintenance, and whatever else goes wrong in the future. And so it is, it is, it is our business. It is our business to be kept informed and to be kept updated, not just the library, on everything, because it's taxpayer money that you're spending. And the accountant in me says, Anne, you have your own business, Brandon, you have your own business, Paul, you have your own business, the rest of you all run your households, you don't pay bills if you don't have the money. And so the accountant in me says, how can you build this if you don't have the money and/or financing in place to cover the shortfall? And it just bothers my mind, so I just want you to know to be not so anti-citizens that talk about on the internet, and I'm one of them, on the Facebook pages about what's going on, we don't understand, we're not being kept informed, don't, don't think bad of us. We want to know, we want to be kept informed, and when we aren't kept informed, we get mad. We get mad because we think that we elected you to do what we want as taxpayers, and we're footing the bill. The bottom line is, we're footing the bill, and we want you to be held accountable for that.
I disagree with you, we would love to be able to communicate that. Uh, one of the things is, if, if what we would love to have as a community, we would love to have this room filled every time, so people can still agree. Uh, we try to get the words out to the citizens. I don't know what else we could do, uh, I just don't.
I don't know what the answer is either, I, I mean, I, I put it out there all the time.
It's not just.
Don't complain if you don't come to this, to the meeting.
It's that way.
It is, but I, I just want you, the council, I don't want to say be more lenient with, with us, but realize that we, we, we want to know, and we have the right to know. And when we don't know, is when we get mad and we spout off and we spew all this stuff online, I mean, we're mad, we're frustrated because we don't get answers, and we want answers. We just want you to keep us updated, when the construction starts, keep us updated. Just let us know, put out a, a thing on the library Facebook page and say, hey, this is what's going on. We've, you know, like, we've laid the foundation, we're getting ready to do this, it would go so much further in helping these citizens know what's going on and understand it, just let us know, keep us informed, and we'll be happy. I mean, had you kept us informed all along, nobody, nobody would be complaining, we'd be like, okay, we'll take it, we'll deal with it. That's how we all do it, that's how we all deal with life, we'll take it, we'll deal with it, and we'll move forward, but when you don't tell us, we don't know, and we say, oh, they're keeping secrets, they're hiding stuff, they're behind closed doors, they're making secret meetings, they're making decisions, that's what we think.
Well, rest assured, the council is not going to break any laws.
It's not about breaking laws.
We have the sunshine laws in this state.
It's not about breaking laws.
Yes, it is, because we're not hiding anything.
It, it, but when you don't tell us, and you bring things out that come out in meetings, and we think, where did that come from?
I want to put words in her mouth, Skip, I believe as a pers, a perceived, not actual, is, is a perceived notion. Um, and I do agree, we do need to communicate better.
Yeah, just come out and tell us what's going on, we'll handle it, we'll say, okay, we may agree, we may disagree, that's okay too, we can agree to disagree.
Well, I would mention this to the folks watching on YouTube. It is disappointing when citizens tell, say that they want to know more, but when you have an election for three council members, less than eight percent of the registered voters vote. Now.
That's sad.
Where does that go?
It's sad.
I don't know an answer.
I don't either, I wish to be there. I'm just talking about the ones that are paying attention.
Few years ago, few years ago, we paid extra money in the city, we sent out a list of all the events in a given year because everybody said they wanted to have them in their hands. We'll come to find out, that money spent, we just did it once, because everybody told us, I don't know what you're talking about. We put them in the water bills, everybody in town gets a water bill. But they take the water bill out and they chuck everything else, and if it's anything that they need to see, they don't see, so I, I don't have an answer.
I, I agree, peo, people don't pay attention and then they complain, I, I agree with that, I agree. I'm just talking about those of us that are paying attention, we just want to be kept informed.
Kathy, give me a call, we'll talk about the library tomorrow, I'll tell you everything you want to know.
I don't really want to know a whole lot. I just want to know before I come to a council meeting that it's, it's like in our face coming up to be discussed, but I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Yes, sir, Ma.
My name's Michael Brown, and I'm the president of the Friends of the O'Kelly Memorial Library. Uh, this, uh, person just before me, this, this fine lady, uh, talked about communicating, uh, and we recognize that there's a need for that. We're trying to do a better job on Facebook, and, uh, there have been articles, uh, recently in the, with that daily news about one of the, one of the sponsors, uh, you know, we had a photo session in the library, we also had it in the, uh, Walton Tribune, there's a great, uh, article in the, uh, Insider, in the Loganville Insider, uh, this fall and spring issue with a lot of pictures and everything. Now that we have, uh, some documentation and some, and some, uh, representation about the, what the library looked like, uh, I think momentum is, is, uh, is gaining, uh, as far as contributions go, so as far as the shortfall goes, I'm all for, um, value engineering, and if that means we got to reduce the size, then I, I think the option of not doing anything with this library is, would be disastrous. We really wouldn't have, we're using the library in our city with this, uh, construction at the intersection of Highway twenty and, and seventy eight. So I think it's important that we move forward, uh, because I don't, I don't see that we have an option. As far as the shortfall goes, then I'll take it, I'll take the responsibility for not coming up with the two million dollars. Uh, we're working, uh, we're working hard on that, but, uh, uh, I just submitted, uh, just put in the post office, uh, a bid, a, an application for the Walton County Foundation for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the landscaping. Uh, we've applied to them before, they say they don't, uh, fund, uh, actual construction, but they would, they've told me they would assure, they would assure me that they would contribute for landscaping, so, uh, I think there's some momentum there, and there's other, uh, community leaders that we plan to get in touch with, so.